Senior Safety Crime Prevention Presentations will be scheduled as follows. Waters Edge Apartments on October 13th at 10:00 a.m., Hillside Terrace Apartments on October 13th at 2:00 p.m. This will be going on, starting next month. This is an initiative with the Police Department. At this time, I would like to read a letter for an appointment regarding Patrick Kerr from the Chief. As a follow-up to the discussion held during the Police Committee Monthly Meeting on September 20th, I respectfully request the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis formally appoint Officer Patrick Kerr to the permanent civil service position of police officer with the City of Port Jervis Police Department effective September 22nd, 2016. On September 22nd, 2015, Officer Kerr officially began his duties with the City of Port Jervis Police Department as a probationary police officer. Officer Kerr has successfully completed the Police Chiefs Association of Orange County Police Academy, Departmental Field Training Program, and all police basic training requirements with the State of New York. Officer Kerr has demonstrated a high degree of skill, professionalism, and commitment to the law enforcement profession. He continually excels as a proactive, community-oriented patrol officer who is attentive to his duty, maintains a high degree of self-discipline, and works diligently to strengthen police and community partnerships in fulfillment of our police safety mission. It is my professional opinion that Officer Kerr will continue to serve the residents of the City of Port Jervis with great professionalism, professionalism, pride, and respect, and be an incredible asset to the City of Port Jervis Police Department. I respectfully request that this matter be forwarded to the Common Council under the Police Committee Business for consideration of permanent appointment effective September 22nd, 2016 in accordance to Civil Service Law sincerely, Chief William Warden. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Patrol Officer Patrick Kerr from probationary to permanent appointment with the Port Jervis Police Department.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Foster, second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And also, I would like to make a motion for Police Department for permission to dispose of expired surplus body armor that is no longer usable for police service.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Foster, second by Mr. Bavozo to get rid of expired body armor. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. And our next meeting will be on Tuesday, October 11th, right here in the council room at 7:00 p.m. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We move to Liaison. CDA, Ms. Troby.
Thank you. As a follow-up to something Mr. Belcher spoke about at the last meeting, the CDA is hosting a free first-time homebuyers workshop. That will be Tuesday, October 25th, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on the second floor of the REC Center. You must have a family income of at least $20,000 per year. For more information, you can contact the CDA, or you can contact Pat Stone, who will be hosting or doing the event. You can call them at 845-569-0770. Also, another thing that was talked about at the last CDA meeting in August was the Big Brothers and Big Sisters Program. And Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Orange County is looking for mentors for this area to match up with children that are ready for a mentor. So if you're interested in becoming a Big Brother or Big Sister, then call 845-562-5900 or visit www.mentorchild.org. Our next meeting will be this Wednesday, September 28th at 7:00 p.m. on the second floor of the REC Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. IDA, Ms. Randazzo.
Our last meeting was held on September 22nd here in the council chambers. We discussed a few properties, one being 100 River Road. We also discussed 100 Pike Street and also 33 Ralph Street. We also discussed that the financials were issued to the IDA. And Ms. Wazaneger is in contact with the auditors. There was an error that she found, and it will be reissued. The next meeting will be October 19th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. ADA, Mr. Foster.
Our next meeting will be on December 5th at 6:30, right here in the council chambers, following DPW. Thank you.
Thank you. Housing Authority, Mr. Segal.
Thank you, Mayor. The last meeting was held on August 23rd. The next meeting is tomorrow, September 27th at 7:00 p.m. at Hillside Terrace. And that's all I have to add.
Thank you. Recreation Commission, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mayor. This past Saturday, September 24th, the city and the Recreation Department officially named the tennis courts at Church Street Park the Luanne McCarthy Memorial Tennis Courts. More than 100 friends and family attended the emotional ceremony as we honored our friend and longtime Recreation Commission member. Thank you to everyone that attended and assisted in the ceremony. This past Friday, September 23rd, the U Center held its annual back-to-school dance during our Friday Night Teenage Night Program. Close to 70 teens attended and had a great time. Thanks to the U Center staff for all their assistance. This upcoming Saturday, October 1st, 2016, the West Point Cycling Team will be hosting the Army Mountain Classic Mountain Bike Race on our new trails in the watershed park. The races will take place at Point Peter Park. The race is part of the Eastern Collegiate Cycling Conference, where more than 20 colleges from throughout the Northeast expected to compete. It is anticipated that between 75 to 125 athletes will be competing. Racing starts at 8:00 a.m. Spectators and fans are welcome to watch and cheer on the participants. Parking will be along Skyline Drive before you enter the park. For more information, contact the Recreation Office at 845-858-4045, or email us at pjrec@frontier.net. Upcoming special events: October 22nd, the Will of Orange Trail Run; October 23rd, trip to the New York Jets Football Game. There is a few tickets available. October 29th, the Erie 80 Mountain Bike Race; October 30th, the 70th Annual Halloween Parade. U Center hours are as follows: Monday through Thursday, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.; Friday, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.; Friday night RT nights from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The next scheduled Recreation Commission meeting is Wednesday, October 19th at 7:15 at U Center. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Tourism Board, Mr. Belcher.
Thank you, Mayor. The Tourism Board met on September 7th. We made some finalization of plans for the Fall Follie Festival, which I think everybody will agree turned out to be a very successful event. The place was, the whole street was just full of people. You had trouble getting around, you know? I think it's the best we've ever had. The weather really helped, too. We are planning Halloween lighting contest. There will be two categories: traditional or scary. To register your home within the City of Port Jervis, email PJTourismBoard@gmail.com or call 845-858-4017 and leave the following information: your name, your address, phone number, and your category to judge. Entries are due by Wednesday, October 19th at 5:00 p.m. There is no cost to enter. Judging will be done on Thursday, October 20th after sunset. Winners will be announced at the City Council Meeting on Monday, October 24th, 2016. First, second, and third place winners will receive a certificate of recognition as well as the following prizes. First place, the $25 gift card to JJ International Delicatessen. Second place, $15 gift card to the pointed hat. Third place, the $10 gift card to the pointed hat. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. And your next meeting?
October 12th at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Thank you, sir. Zoning Board, Ms. Randazzo.
Thank you, Mayor. There was no zoning board meeting last month due to lack of business. The next zoning board meeting will take place on Tuesday, October 4th at 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers.
Thank you. And Planning?
Planning Board was canceled last month. The next meeting will take place Tuesday, October 11th at 7:00 p.m. I think that is going to conflict also with police, so I'm assuming Planning will probably be here in the council chambers.
Well, actually, it's all going to conflict because we're going to move our date because Columbus Day happens to be a holiday on the 10th, so we have to move to the 11th, too.
Okay.
So, everything's going to conflict.
We're probably rescheduling the committee meetings.
I would guess so. Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Plumbing and Electrical Board, Mr. Bavozo.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning, the Plumbing and Electrical Boards have not met since our last meeting. The next meetings are tentatively scheduled for October 5th at 6:30 and 6:45 respectively, although we may be trying to go earlier, more like 5:00 and 5:15. I will keep the council updated if there is a change in that. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Senior Advisory, Mr. Segal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Access 23, Mr. Belcher.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Pete Orr for being here tonight to operate the camera so our residents can see the council meeting, and I thank Carl Richards for sending them. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Under Mayor's Correspondence and Information Update, first, I'd like to request a motion to move our council meeting from October 10th, Monday, October 10th, to Tuesday, October 11th.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Randazzo, was it? By Ms. Randazzo. Second by Mr. Bavozo. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So just remember, it's Tuesday rather than Monday. I would like to have a motion to approve the restore application from the public hearing that we had tonight. Do I have a motion for that?
Sub moved.
Motion by Mr. Belcher, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Troby. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. I would like to make an appointment tonight to our Tourism Board. She's here, Ms. Bridget Greck-Manhedon. And I must say that all of a sudden, she dove right in, didn't she, and helped you right out, and all of a sudden, they said, "Hey, you're going to be on the board. Come on, let's go." So I'm going to make that appointment. I was asked late yesterday, so you'll get a letter sometime this week. I'll get a letter together for you, okay? So we welcome you to the Tourism Board. Thank you, and thank you for your help. I do want to mention that we did have Luanne McCarthy's dedication on Saturday. It was a wonderful event. Many, many former colleagues, people who were retired, coaches who were retired from all over the county that coached with Luanne, or I should say against Luanne, but came to support her and support this dedication of the park. And Mike and Mary Ann were ecstatic over it. So thank you for all those that attended, and it was a really great event. Let me go through the pile here. The Frontier Franchise Application for the City. This is the new Frontier Communication Franchise Agreement on the television. Everybody that has received a copy of the contract, and I didn't hear any feedback back, so I would like to entertain a motion to approve.
Sub moved.
Second. I have approval. A motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Bavozo. Discussion?
And to allow you to execute.
And this allows me to execute the contract. You amend your motions?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
It'll be a standard franchise agreement, right?
Yep. I have a letter, even though she mentioned it in her minutes, I have a letter from the REC Department requesting to hold the 70th Annual Halloween Parade on Sunday, October 30th, 2016, at 3:30. The Recreation Commission cordially invites each of us to participate in this year's event, as well as the public lineup will be in front of City Hall at 3:00 p.m. The parade route, as is normal, will turn left onto Sussex, right onto Front, right up Pike Street, onto East Main Street, and then left onto Ulster Place. At the conclusion of the parade, there will be prizes awarded and refreshments served. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sub moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bavozo, second by, there was 100 voices over here, so, okay, Ms. Troby. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. I just wanted everybody to know that the Complete Streets is now online. There's, what was it, 30-some pages, but it also includes Newburgs. Newburgs is at the beginning part, even though the picture is up front here. If you go online, it's right on our homepage. It's the first banner that comes up with Complete Streets. You click on it. You can download the PDF, and it'll give you all the information on the ideas that they would like to move forward with on the Complete Streets. If there are any questions, I believe that there's an email on there that you can email, or you can contact my office. Just give me a moment. All right, so I'm going to announce this again. The New York State, as many of you are aware, the council recently voted to match the grant that we received from New York State for master plan and code review modification. The first step in this process is to form a committee to have a meeting for the grant and to do the work in putting drafts together. The committee typically consists of two or three members of the council, which I have heard from one member of the council, as long as it doesn't conflict with their schedule, a member of the Planning Board, and I have heard from a Planning Board member, a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I have not heard from the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Building Inspector, who doesn't have a choice, and two or three residents of the city, and I've heard from two residents of the city. So I would ask that any council members that are interested, or if there's a zoning board committee member that's interested, to please email me, or still, even if there's anybody from the public, we can take one more. I'd ask that that be done within the next two weeks, so we can appoint this committee and they can move forward with the project. Thank you. On Saturday night, I received a message that there was an article by Mr. James Walsh, the business editor of the Times Herald Record. I was in contact with Senator Schumer's office, who contacted me immediately on Saturday night to discuss this, as well as our county executive, Steve Newhouse. Here's the story. It talks about down with bureaucracy, and the first thing, of course, when I read the article, was that they tried to contact the mayor, and he could not get back, or he did not get back to him, several times, tried to get ahold of the mayor. I would like you to know that he contacted my office by phone at 11:11 in the morning and by email, and I got it in the afternoon. There was, he was off, he was not working Thursday night. Friday, I could not get back to him, and he is off the weekend, and it was printed on Sunday. So therefore, that's why there's no comment from the mayor's office. However, I did give, and the council got a copy of it, a lengthy email to tell him how he was very incorrect in the fact that the city did file for the application for the Whitewater Park. We filed it back in November of 2015, and the permitting agency, who is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who said that they just got it on August 8th, was, in better words, they were mistaken, because they have sent us numerous letters, which I made attachments to that email to Mr. Walsh, in regards to the fact that they are the only permitting agency, but they reached out to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who deferred to the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission to get their opinions. They are not permitted agencies, but they wanted their opinions on the muscle studies. We went ahead and spent another $58,000 of grant money to do those studies, and we submitted them, and then they came back with a list of even more, which we are sitting on right now, of $30,000 worth of requests. I have been working with Shane Segal, as well as Ms. Majinsky on this project. I'll be talking to corporate, I'll be talking to the council during the executive session in regards to funding. We did put in a request to Senator Schumer's office, who are looking for funding for this additional $30,000, as well as the county, which just wants some more information, which I gave to them. So I wanted the public to know that it wasn't anything that the city did, again, this is another issue where there wasn't any follow-up or follow-through by the reporter of the Times Herald Record that put this information out there. The city has about eight houses, eight houses that we have clear titles on, correct? And I think that there's, right, that will, eight to 10. Eight to 10. And then we got, and then we have, I believe, four that we, that aren't on that list, four or five that are not on that list for tearing down. And what I wanted to just run by the council and see what your pleasure is. Mr. Bavozo in the Code Committee has been working on this application for purchase of city-owned properties, and I'm going to ask the Code Committee to really expedite this, hopefully, this meeting, so that we can, we can get these houses, since we now have clear titles to them, we can get them on as a possible bid process, as they're talking about, and so we can get them sold, we can get young families in there, and hopefully back on the tax rolls. So I'm going to ask the Code Committee to please expedite that, and hopefully by the next meeting, maybe we could set up a sale of these homes. 10 that we have clear title to, but some of them are the tear downs. Right? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wazaneger sent us an email on Thursday, September 8th, about the 79 properties. I'm going to ask her if she can update that, because you're probably, you're probably cleared some, correct?
No.
No? Okay. So the 79 properties, to please go out and take a look at them and see if there's any that you think that we should hold. One of the questions that might come up about us holding the properties are, you can go back and look at the history of the people who let it go on taxes, and then they recoup it. You know, I don't have an issue with those. Some of the properties that might be let go, my concern is, especially with the multifamily houses, that we don't get a landlord in there that's going to, you know, just rent it out and cause additional concerns in usage of our Police Department and our Building Department. So I'm just going to ask if the council would go out and take a look at these properties, as it was always recommended to us by our city assessor, that any of the vacant properties, which were recommended by Ms. Wazaneger also, that we should claim those properties. So we'll bring that back up at the next meeting.
We've got enough quality appliance issues already.
Right. So that's why we need to look at those. All right, so, actually, let me announce these other things before I hit the last thing. New York State DOT is requesting a regulatory hearing. Mr. Bavozo and I have already spoke about this on Wednesday, October 12th. It's going to be possibly in the mid-morning sometime. We'll be having the Police Department Police Chief, our DPW Director, our Recreation Director, our Fire Chief, as well as myself and somebody from Metro North, to discuss the railroad crossing at Fowler Street and Fourth Street in front of a hearing officer in regards to the putting the actual crossing in. I have already reached out to Congressman Maloney's office, as he is on the Transportation Council, as far as the money goes, because it's about $750,000 to put the crossing in. The crossing is intended for safety issues, for emergency egress regress, as well as egress regress out of, out of the acre area into our downtown area. And then lastly, it could lead to an advantage for us to have additional parking for downtown. It is the responsibility of the New York State DOT to contact the local area people who own properties there to also get their input. But if anybody has any questions about this, feel free to contact me, and I will forward your information on to Mr. Greg Hart, who is the Railroad Coordinator. Just a reminder that on October 22nd is the Will of Orange. Please sign up for the Will of Orange. You can go to, I think the REC website is probably the easiest, or you can go right onto our website. And then on October 29th is the Erie 80, which is the bike race, which will also use the watershed in the Elks Bronx Park. So that is, that is coming up at the end of next month. But coming up at the beginning of next month, which is only on Saturday, is something really exciting. The Eastern Collegiate Cycling Conference is hosting a race recommended by West Point here on Saturday to use our, well, a lot of people will say our watershed trails, but they're actually going to use all the trails on the Elks Bronx Park. We have created 30 miles worth of hiking and biking trails. So first, I want to take this opportunity to apologize to anybody that if I missed you, not calling you back in five minutes, or I've been tied up a lot up on the trails as long, as well as many, many other people. We have people from the Delaware Valley School District, Tom Moran, we have Adam Hubbard from the Menesink Valley School District, and many, many other volunteers that are out there. TC Crawford, who owns the bike shop in Milford, spending countless hours away from their families to build these hiking and biking trails. They are just incredible. Just this Saturday, or, excuse me, this is Sunday morning, yesterday morning, they went up there and cleared a lot of these trails to allow for this event to happen. We've already approved to close down Point Peter for the entire day, which is this Saturday, so there'll be no access to any of the public to go up to Point Peter. However, you can park your car on Skyline Drive, and you can walk up there to check out the races. The event is held here in Port Jervis on October 1st, which is Saturday, and then they have an event down at the, what's it called, Mountain Creek on the 2nd, so it's a dual day. But we could have hundreds of cyclists here, mountain biking racing in the City of Port Jervis. I am going to post probably either tonight or tomorrow. I met with, along with John, and Adam Hubbard took them on the trails, but we took four scouts from West Point to go on the trails, and they said that these have been the best trails they have ridden in a long time, let alone this season. I want to share with the council, starting tonight, the maps are official. They are up on the website, and I will post the website. These are hiking and biking trails. This is, this includes the entire watershed and Elks Bronx Park. As I said, there are 30 miles worth of trails. Eventually, there will be about 60 miles worth of trails. The interesting thing is, is since I've hiked all these trails, most of them are on old logging roads, or old roads that were used before the reservoirs were there. There are probably only about six or seven trails that were natural cut into the earth by the people who are creating the trails. What you're going to notice on here is, up on the top left-hand corner, the trails are delineated by their E's. You have the beginner trail, which is a triangle. They'll look like this. So every trailhead, every trailhead that you come to, there'll be a 4x4 post, and it will tell you on that 4x4 post what the trail is. And the reason we do this is for people who are colorblind, the triangle, right, there's a triangle for Reservoir Road, the triangle in the color white mean it's the easiest trail. Then it goes to an easy trail, which means it's a little bit harder than the easiest trail, and the color is green. But for colorblind people, you'll see a circle, and it'll tell you what direction it goes in. Then we move, and I got to keep these in order, I'm sorry, because I have to post these all up tomorrow. Then it goes to the intermediate trail, which is blue, but for colorblind people, it would be the square. And then we go to the advanced, which is the oval, which is the red. And then the expert, and I don't have that one created yet, but that is black, and it is a diamond. And then if you're on a road like Skyline Drive, it is also a circle, but it has road written in the middle of it. So that is somewhere over there. These will be all on the 4x4 posts. We are creating a 46-inch map at all the trailheads, the one on Reservoir Avenue, the one up at the top of Point Peter, and the one on Boxbaum Road, where you'll be able to look at these, but there will be a QR reader on here. So you can scan your phone, and you'll bring the map right up on your phone. So you can follow the map along. We're having an app created right now that will have the map, and you will be able to, the dot, wherever you are, will follow you on the map. We are in the process, or I'm in the process of creating an emergency management plan for the ambulance, the Police Department, the Fire Department of Port Jervis and Sparrow Bush, and that should be done in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll be working with them to show them all the area. I can't give enough kudos to our Department of Public Works. We received grant money from Senator Bonnais's office, and we are currently putting gates up where there weren't gates to prohibit vehicles and quads and motorcycles from getting in there. But it's interesting, because it's just an exact specification between posts, so that a bicycle, or of course, a hiker can walk through it. a bicycle, or of course, a hiker can walk through it, quads and motorcycles can't get through it.